Should we mention in case we go off of Zoom? Do we have anybody? They don't think they've just been canceled.
Okay, I'll make a quick announcement. Sorry, I should have. Thank you. So the firewall for the buildings being replaced or something along those lines and technology let us know about an hour ago that we might have unstable. So we're on a backup internet source. So all your guys' computers and ours and Zoom is all being run on like a Wi-Fi hockey puck. You guys know what those are? So I've been assured it's it should work. So well, so if we have any outages, we can either recess if we're down or we can pile on through. So that's but I think we're all on the internet source now. That's what we were doing right before scrambling to get the meeting set. So we shouldn't have any hiccups at the six o'clock hour whenever they take the internet down.
Okay.
And then changes to the agenda. Do you want to swap those two first items?
Yeah, we'll get to that. So we got the consented set agenda with just the minutes of August fifteenth and September fifth. Think August fifty twenty twenty-three first. Any objections, corrections? Hearing none. Those are minutes are approved. Next, while the September fifth meeting, we need objections, corrections. All right, those are approved. And we'll move to the workshop action items. Well, I would suggest that we switch the discussion of the EPA wetlands. Information with the vacation rental could be have fishing game here in the form of Mr. Horstman. So we'll switch those. Those are objection and the objection. During that, that's what we'll do. Let me stick it out. I want to start this.
So I provided you the the board, the you know, correspondence I had with Tom Dubendorfer, who's probably one of the probably deals with wetlands just more than we do in the in the county. He's the one guy that does most of delineations throughout the Bonner County. Along with that, I supplied with you guys the different regulation changes. And I'm just met with legal last Friday about this and provided a bunch of stuff to Bill for his review again, an overview as as we see it as to the changes that have been made at the federal level. There's been no changes in the state and I've reached out to a couple of planning directors. Unfortunately, that and I haven't sent an email out to all the planning directors to see throughout the state of who's reacting and who's changing by any of their regulations. The two I've reached out to so far don't have wetlands or in a regulation inside their code. They just rely on the federal guidance. So I think I'll draft up an email and send it off to everybody. See what changes are being made statewide. Or should we be the forefront of change? So
Yeah. So just a little bit of background. I mean, I think everybody knows this, but these regulations were being changed or they are being suggested to be changed as a result of the second decision. Which modified the jurisdiction of the EPA substantially or very significantly. So that's what he's addressing. And I invited there Horstman here from Fish and Game to kind of give us which you gain perspective on these changes as a result of the Supreme Court decision since American addresses.
Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be fine if you if you want to sit down and speak with us, you don't have to stand there this whole time.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
So, yeah, after first off, I was planning on providing you with some some wetland information and guidance, but in lieu of the sack decision and everything changing and kind of wanted to wait. And now that the sack of decision came out, I kind of ran it up the flagpole with the fishing game. How does this change? What we're gonna do? Because one of the things that the decision said is yes, this is going to change federal oversight of wetlands. But it encouraged state and municipalities to continue to protect wetlands. So I kind of ran that up the flagpole with fishing game and found found out something that I didn't know that state of Idaho was actually a plaintiff in the sack of decision. And so obviously we don't have any plans as a state to enact additional wetland regulations at this time. Second decision really was a fight over a couple of words and it was one decision with three opinions. So I've got a feeling that that is going to change. Because it was a five to four decision, but there was three opinions written. So even even the Supreme Court can't figure out what they want to say about wetlands. So it's just one of those topics that. So as a state and as a fishing game representative, we will continue to comment on a application by application basis on wetlands. We will still continue to ask for wetlands to be protected. But the state doesn't have any plans to enact further regulation. And that's going to go down to probably the county level. And as as Jake said, some some probably will will lower protections, some may raise them. Many counties still don't have any wetland protections because they rely on the core. And that was that was the well and protections and those have obviously changed. So I just I wanted to give you that update. And if you guys have questions about anything else, one thing that you may not have heard yet just came out today. And it has the potential to have effects in Bonner County that quagga mussels were detected in the Snake River for the first time in in the actual river, not in a not in a at a boat check station. It's the larval stages. But that is connected to the Columbia system, which all of our lakes up here are also connected to. So there there's an emergency Department of Ag plan. They don't know what the extent of it is. But they are, I think all the boat ramps in that area are closed. And they're trying to figure out now what the extent of the infestation is.
At what point to mistake for the most.
Down by twin. There's a section down by twin that's it's impounded. I can't remember the exact name of it, but yeah, it's it's right by. Yeah, Magic Valley is where they detected and they detected the larval form, which is the free swimming form. So something to pay attention to, but it has huge implications for the Columbia River system. If we can't contain that.
So this is down there. It would be how likely is that that would migrate up here?
Well, I'm it's one of those things that they're all connected and those are very vigorous and invasive. So I think it would take quite a while, but you once you hit a portion lower snake, everything kind of connects with barges and stuff going to the ocean. So it would take some time, but it's it's a possible possibility. So boat check stations are going to be working overtime here.
Looking back to weapons. Now, we we have in the drafts that we're dealing with now. We've explained the process, you know, national weapons inventory, that that's just a probability sort of analysis. And that if there's something that's in that inventory, then it has to be delineated and so on. But from a and and the county requires that delineation at this point. It is determined to be a wetlands or our setback issues, stuff like that. They're already in our code. Right beyond that, you see the county doing anything beyond that?
The one thing that comes to mind is the the decision was based on the connection, right? So it's the surface connection. And that was pretty much the impetus of the decision. In the in the case of the Sackett case, that wetland is still probably connected to Priest. It's just not surface connected because there's a road across it. And my thoughts are if I wanted to develop something. But I could just build a road across it and then say it's not connected any anymore. So I think one pretty obvious, easy way to protect things is put something in there about was this connected before some sort of human caused disconnection occurred? And that's that's where I think this may change in the future. Because as it stands right now, there's a there's a gaping loophole in the law that, well, if it's surface connected, it's protected. If it's not that it loses those protections. Well, if you can disconnect a wetland pretty easily, build a road across it, build a fence across it, whatever it takes. The way that it they described it in the decision, it doesn't take much to cause a wetland to go from connected to disconnected because that road in the Sackett decision is what disconnected it. But that's not that's not a natural road. That's a that's an anthropogenic source. So that to me, that's something to consider. Yes, it's that whole callous spell Fenn there.
So wetlands only connected on the surface to one another?
No.
Well, then how can I mean, if you build a road over it, it's still be connecting
Right.
under the road.
That's
I guess
that I
therefore to make it simplistic is that everyone is to use a surface.
Right.
Link, I mean, which is we all know that aquifers and wetlands and things like that are have subtrading and
Right.
But we have to look at like, where does the regulation stem from? It's from that nineteen seventies Clean Water Act. And it defines Clean Water Act is a is your navigable bodies, right? So it's your surface connection. It's your creeks, your streams, your lakes. It doesn't talk about subsurface.
Right.
I understand all that. I'm just saying this is like everything else gonna be in flux.
Right.
The future. So I think we just use our best practices here as we understand.
Well, that's what's shifting now is what is best practice? So if the definition of a wetland has been modified by this by this statute or sorry, by this court case, you go to so I think Mr. Lynn Scott sent me this. It's thirty-nine thirty-six oh one, which is the intent of the or legislative intent underwater quality, health and safety. And it says it is the intent of the legislature. This is the last couple of lines that the state of Idaho fully meet the goals and requirements of the Clean Water Act and that the rules propagated under the under this chapter not impose requirements beyond those of the federal Clean Water Act. So if the federal government is modifying what they're defining as, you know, protected by the Clean Water Act, then state of Idaho is going to fall follow suit unless this gets changed. So then the question comes to the county of do we want to impose more restrictions and regulations than what's provided in state statute?
Well, can you know, I mean, that's the first question is
Yeah.
If the way that's worded, it doesn't sound it sounds like since the county is a subdivision of the state, the state can enact more strict regulations and what the water act. How how the county do that?
There's a whole lot of gray in that right now.
From a from a could I say from a practical perspective is is what's going to happen here at some point in time. The wetlands inventory is going to be changed and a large and some number of wetlands that are currently there that are deemed to not be connected via surface connection with a navigable body are going to be eliminated. So is that what's we expect to happen? And therefore there will continue to be some wetlands that are listed in the National Wetlands Inventory that meet these new criteria. And and unless we change something in in our code, we'll continue to regulate those wetlands the way we do today. There'll be setback requirements. They'll have to be delineated, et cetera, et cetera. It's only the ones that get eliminated from the National Wetlands Inventory that now fall off, fall off the map for us, sort of. So and we no longer have a way to regulate them. And I'm not sure. It's not obvious to me how we would how we would do that because I don't know how we would identify.
Well, question, man. Do we have a formal? Does the county have a formal list? Inventory of wetlands?
So we use the National Wetlands Inventory, which the Corps of Engineers actually told us shouldn't be used for ordinance.
So you
Well, I I actually have an email I just received. I think it was yesterday from US Fish and Wildlife. Regarding the N W I, let me pull that up here. I thought I had it printed out.
Well, he's looking for it. So is my understanding correct? Is that what you expect to happen? The N W I is going to change or?
No, no. So the N W I was created in the eighties, I believe, using satellite imagery. And so it is it is meant to be a starting point and a suggestion that there is at some point there was in nineteen eighty-two or whenever they did the the imagery, there was a wetland there. They there's no way that they could just take wetlands out of it and say these aren't protected anymore. So it's going to continue to be a suggested starting point.
Okay.
For whatever comes after that, but it is at some point there was wet ground here. And we need to take a look at that.
So really what's going to happen is the Army Corps is when they when they go out to delineate decide they're going to be using the new criteria, which is the change of surface connection.
Right.
Adjacency or anything, whatever.
So I expect what we're gonna
in their in their in their analysis. So if you have a wetlands that's you know, inland from from a from a navigable body, then they're gonna say it's not it's not a regular.
Right. Well, and there's I I expect several court cases to follow this because is a causeway. Does that block a connection? Does a road block a connection? What a low bridge? So there's going to be a lot of questions because they didn't really define much. They said surface connection. So if you have a causeway with four big culverts through it, does that maintain that surface connection? They they nobody, nobody has gotten down to that point yet. So I think that there will continue to be upgrades to make this a little bit more clear. And right now it's just not.
About twenty years ago, all of this happened during that administration as well. And that's when, because at that time, the administration said anything that's higalogically connect.
Right.
So subsurface and so forth and on. And roadside ditches became wetlands classified protected wetlands. The Corps of Engineers, they they just follow what they're told to do. So now they went here, now they're here, now they're here, now they're there. So so a lot of this, I expect that a lot of that history is going to come out in court cases and usually we do that, here's we do that, here's we do that. And here's the effect of that. So that's my take on it. It just nothing's new.
Right.
It's just now finally we have a court decision from the Supreme Court that ended this way this time.
Well, and honestly, I think there's somewhere in between where it is now and where it was, there's a sweet spot that would would serve the the public and the habitat. But I don't think it I don't think either extreme is helpful.
So this really defines what what lands can be regulated, correct? By the federal government?
By the federal government.
Right. Does that mean then that those are the only wetlands that exist? It is not. So I think we have to be mindful of that and not get so entwined around the axle about what is a wetland? I mean, there are I believe definitions or characteristics that define a wetland or have wetland characteristics and therefore is a wetland, even though it may not be on inventory. So I just think the county needs to be mindful of that. And then whether or not in the planning process or permit process, is that a wetland that needs to be recognized and dealt with in whatever matter it might be? I mean, this is going back to using common sense, which I think what
Well, but and I've I've seen the letters from the Army Corps in applications that say that yes, there there's a wetland here, but it's not connected waters to the US and therefore we don't regulate it. And that's what that's what you'll get into a packet. It says
seems really about regulation.
Jurisdiction. Yeah, it's jurisdiction.
So does it say it's a wetland or not? I mean,
Yeah, you have to define what a wetlands is and whether or not, you know, the county is in the business of identifying wetlands.
Are there not definitions for a wetland though? What defines a wetland?
Yes.
It has certain characteristics.
And they're they're written by EPA. To be charged to
I'm just saying
that's really under the planning
refer to those and use good judgment to say that's a wetland may not be regulated by this rule.
But
at the federal level, but
at the federal level, but I do not believe the state of Idaho has granted that authority to local governments such as Bonner County to go ahead and start regulating that which is not determined by US Army Court as jurisdictional.
I'm not taught that. In fact, I'm trying to get a word away from the word from a planning perspective of the word regulation. I don't care who regulates it. It's and I don't I don't know if that's necessary for us to define how or who regulates it in our planning document.
Well, if if the county can't regulate it, then it shouldn't be. Yeah. Shouldn't be. We have, if you so so what the states, as I understand the state statute, we can, we can't do anything that's over and above what the Clean Water Act says with regard to wetlands. That's my interpretation of that code section.
No, I didn't. I was not aware of that code section. So
it's it's been hidden. I
Yeah.
Yeah. And I actually found that in a really cool document.
I guess one way, another way to look at it is it can be regulated probably through building building code. Because if you're gonna if people start building a wetlands, you're gonna have you're gonna be dealing with public safety of septics that don't work and moldy basements and
Yeah, they're gonna have to fill them. And I think that's where this kind of comes from is that four oh four permit, which is a dredge dredge and filter. And this is how the Sack is got started. They they neglected to get a four oh four permit to go ahead and fill that wetlands in. And what the Supreme Court on on the Sackett wetland determined that all that was a nine old decision on that, that that was not jurisdictional. They didn't have to get a permit to grant that.
So that's that's what makes that decision even more difficult because the actual facts that were before the court was a nine hours by four. So but then they were, as you said, three, three different.
Right.
What I expected we're we're gonna get is a lot of when we enforce our current regulations saying, okay, you need to go get a four or four permit or something with the porks. It appears that those wetlands are delineation, something that we're going to get notes or comments or decisions back from the core saying this is non-jurisdictional. So we're not going to be able to have any teeth to
Will they will the core not delineate a wetland that they decide is not within their jurisdiction?
So they don't do the delineation.
They don't delineate it now.
No.
Educated.
Private. It's up to private individuals. So you know, an expert in the in the field. So it's Yeah, it's on us. So there's there's other states that truly care about wetlands and they have state agencies and a lot of state oversight. And they have they have wetland delineators that go out for free. And I used to live in one of those states and they truly have regulation that, you know, that cares for and protects wetlands throughout their states. And Idaho is just not one of those. We don't have it built into our state code.
Yeah, the document I was referencing is called State Protection of Non-Federal Waters Trambidity Continues is issued by the Environmental Law Institute. Authored by James McElfish, which is a senior attorney at the Environmental Law Institute. It's kind of an interesting read. I came where I found it. But it was written, it was drafted in September twenty twenty-two. So it's fairly recent. It goes in what they refer to as CAP two. I believe there's fourteen states in the United States that completely rely on the the determination and the definition of wetlands from the US Army Corps and EPA. Idaho is one of them.
Now, who is the Environmental Law Institute?
I have no idea who they are.
No idea.
So the other thing that's interesting to me is that yeah, even if it sounds to be within the Clean Water Act, Army Corps jurisdiction is really only the dredge and bill part. It's not habitat protection. So I don't know what that means in terms of Idaho statute. Because it doesn't clean water. It doesn't doesn't report to regulation habitat concerns.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, and I think that's what Tom Dubendorf's letter, you know, if you look through that, he kind of points that out on what's for the Clean Water Act. And when the concerns that I have in light of thirty-nine thirty-six oh one is as Tom Dubendorf states in his in his letter, you know, the court does not require setbacks from wetlands. And it appears to me by us having a forty foot setback from wetlands is is creating regulations more stringent than the Clean Water Act? And are we are we violating? Is that a conflict with our own state statute?
That's the question I have.
And we have seen that work in like the inverse of what we expect. So people are getting four or four permits, filling wetlands just so they can meet setbacks. So where you really want to do is protect wetlands. So that's why you have a buffer in there. So the opposite sometimes happening. I'm not saying it's it's super often, but I've seen a number of building permits where they have to go through and fill wetlands just so they can meet a setback for it. So
I mean, how's it? How's the county? If it's not a jurisdictional wetland and they come in delineate and then they find it's not jurisdictional? How how can the county go ahead and require forty or we're not going to require?
We would essentially say if the court, I think our our code and I I copy pasted or I I printed off ours our code into the file as well. So twelve dash seven point three. So our wetlands code and essentially says if if determined by and it gives a list of agencies, US Fish and Wildlife Service, National Wetlands Inventory.
Idaho Fish and Game, National Fish and Wildlife was on Corps of Engineers or the applicants design professional.
There you go. Thank you. Yep. Yeah, seven, three, three, three. So if we get a letter back from Corps of Engineers saying it's non-jurisdictional, therefore it's not wetlands essentially. So as defined and protected under the Clean Water Act. So whether it is or isn't how it's been utilized in the past under definition is just not protected by that state statute or by that federal statute, therefore it's state statute. Correct. So we're we're in this reactionary right now to what we've been getting. So this all came out August twenty eighth was when they finally gave the the rule change. And that's what's been said to you guys. Again, I'm pending kind of a review by by legal on this, but I wanted to get before you guys and say where are we at with this? And do we want to consider a code change or just get it on your mind to start thinking about? So given that we're also talking about
right with words, setbacks or
Just in general, like reviewing our code versus what the decision was.
I think we need to have an opinion from Wilson
Sure.
with regard to what the county can do in light of the state statute and and with regard to you know, this, these new regulations are coming out. I think we shouldn't be the ones that have to decide that.
And I and I can't help that 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 the Attorney General actually shouldn't get involved because this is going to be affecting. This is
it'd be really good to have. Our first our first inquiry is to our own attorneys.
Sure.
They want to get something from the pretty general that they should.
I I will follow up.
Exactly. This is some sounds like something that's going to require action from the legislature in order to get you authority to Yep. And everybody else.
I will follow up and send out. I have a list served to all the county planning directors and I'll ask them if anybody's making a change or drafting a change or considering one and see what that is. I can report back in the next meeting.
Draft of the that we've been working on that that contains the wetland section. Is that is that available? Hopefully now.
No, it's still in draft form. So until we finalize that draft, we haven't been publishing those on the website.
Who aside from us and Coopie County have surface water in the state of any appreciable amount? I mean, that's one of the reasons they don't care about wetlands. They really don't have many.
Now you have McCall, right? That whole area.
And Southeast.
There's central Idaho. There's a few spots.
I would like to have at least that section, the wetland section that we've kind of been tossing around, even though it's in draft form. You have a copy to Barrett.
Sure.
Just for their comments. Want a copy of it too, Jennifer? You want copy to, uh, Jennifer Exstrom too?
Sure.
I'm sorry, say it again. Sure.
Yeah, just shoot me an email with the request on it and I can reply and drop all the stuff you gave me.
Thank you, Jennifer Exstrom with Idaho Conservation League. I would appreciate. Um, access to the draft you've been working on as well as any agency and individual comments that have been submitted. Thank you.
Analysis by EPA. All right, well.
It, it might be a really bum drive style document now. There's a lot of. We don't have anything specific to Idaho right now.
Except that close section.
Uh, yeah, so there's, uh, state statute under.
Thirty nine dash thirty six oh one.
Thirty nine thirty six.
Also thirty nine dash one oh seven D. So you may want to take a look at that too, Jennifer. Seems to restrict our. State, um, jurisdiction perhaps ours as well since we're a separate state, so. Thirty nine thirty six oh one. Chapters thirty nine.
It's the health and safety.
Yeah.
And then thirty six is water quality. So it kind of makes sense, right? Health, safety, water quality, and then that's the intent. So it's the very beginning thirty six oh one.
Thirty six fishing game code.
Oh, you should know that better than me. I don't know.
Well, it, it's, it's, yours is probably title thirty six and this is title thirty nine dash thirty six oh. Yeah, that's why. So any other questions of staff or?
Yeah, you're right. Thirty six is fishing name. You pass it to us.
Any other questions? I try to, I appreciate it. Um, yes. You know, we're trying to work through this. So, you know, if you want to have a front plan. Also, you know, maybe be the basis for whatever.
And just as a, as a note, natural resources, Swati says she's still trying to track down data for those last two chapters. So. She doesn't have a whole lot of updates since our last meeting. We can discuss it, but. Um, it wouldn't, there's not a whole lot of changes is what she told me. I haven't reviewed her document yet. I've been focused on that public services aspect and updating that, but just a heads up.
Chapters one, two, and five. Pretty good, pretty, pretty well said, except for the weapons.
All right, here.
And we've got two other chapters that we're still working on that need to be updated. So we probably, even though it's on our agenda to discuss about, we probably won't. Um, just because Swati's not here. So, um, that's where we are and hopefully we want to get this finalized. Or at least put in the, in the position so that we can have a public comment workshop on the, on the natural resources component. Um, and then hopefully we know that one, but without those, starting hopefully another session. We invite. Yeah, great. Any other questions? Yes.
He could tell you.
Maybe. All right. So I guess we'll go back to the application of rental permits.
Thank you.
Thank you, Merritt.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Yeah, all right. So we have a. We have the drafts that we were working on. Uh, before we got, well, I guess we should get into, uh, what happened at the commissioners meeting. Jake, you wanted to go through that?
Yeah, so the, the. I thought we had talked about it the next day then, or that night. I think it was the same, it was the same day. So they approved the software. That was two weeks ago. So I, from, since then, payment's been sent out to them. I talked to Deckard today. We're getting handed off to. Uh, the minions, people in charge, they're gonna start mapping and doing the work. So. I think I should be getting contact information in the next day or two for our point of contact who's gonna work with us. So, um, yeah, so we're gonna start. Working through and finding all the short term rentals. It's kind of interesting. I was in a conversation earlier today with. A group of eight neighbors that are mad and in the conversation, they're like, oh, and down the street, this other guy, he has his as a short term rental. Do you know if they have a permit? This is probably the third time I've had this conversation. I look it up and on our internal map and sure enough, they, they don't have a permit. So like, there are a number of them. Um, there's a significant number, I'd assume. I mean, based on our different analysis, right? It's. Three to five hundred or something like that that don't have a permit, so. It'll be interesting as we work with Deckard on identifying these properties of just how many are. Anyway, so, um, what I provided to you in the, do you mind, Mr. Chair? I just kind of took it. So what I provided to you was the different drafts and I think the first one doesn't have a date on it. Then there's a. Five thirty draft and a six twenty draft. And then there's the, the spreadsheet analysis for the failing septic system to short term rental analysis they did. And then some code references from other jurisdictions on how they regulate.
I asked, I didn't understand that failing septic system. Was that, were all those addresses just short term rentals?
So there's one list that's all the short term rentals that we've issued since we had the ordinance in two thousand eighteen. Then the other list was the failing septic systems of the same time period. And then there's a correlation of like, okay, how many of these have the same, same locations of which there were four. Um, three of which failed. Before the short term rental permit was issued and one was after. So the idea was, do we, is there any correlation between these two numbers? Is there a cause and effect? So that's what we determined is we can't. We can't say for certain and it'd be really interesting another year with a lot more short term rental data. If we do that same analysis and we come to a different conclusion. So I'd assume based on, you know, we have a three hundred or so and I think there's. Or I don't remember how many fail, failing septic system list there was. I want to say a couple hundred at least.
It was about thirty five to forty five a year. On average, eighteen through this year.
Twenty three, there's only three.
No, it was more than that.
I'm doing twenty twenty three?
Yeah.
So this data was as of like mid-June.
Seven, there's seven.
An extensive number when I.
Seventeen so far this year, but that's partially a year.
There's like four different tabs along the bottom.
Okay, maybe I missed that.
Right, yeah, there, it's, it's a.
But the interesting thing was like Jake said, only four are short term rentals. And some of those you probably would argue aren't caused by the fact that they're short term.
We were before we issued a permit. So. You have the idea of like, well, were they used as such? And then they got a permit later. So I, you know, there's a lot of.
Even so, yeah, my conclusion, and I was one of the ones who was most concerned. I don't know how, what everybody else's level of concern was, but I was definitely concerned about this and. I have to say from the data, it doesn't appear to be a big problem.
I'm really glad you swayed, you swayed this way. I was, I was hoping I can at least convince you.
Now, it's something I think we should continue to watch.
Absolutely.
Um, but, but I don't see from this data like there's a, there's a big problem with short term rentals causing failing septic systems. That's my conclusion.
I just think there's all. We shouldn't be jumping to. conclusions or deductions with very limited information, which was one of the reasons I think. When we started discussing this, that we were starting to see, well, we need a recommendation of a professional. Uh, oversight to really define. Uh, the issues dealing with rentals in Bonner County for the benefit of the. Uh, county, uh, rules, regulations, maybe to, uh. To change what we're. Uh, leaving the tier, but. My point is, I'm not sure what's causing failures. Uh, yeah, there's seventeen, twenty failures a year. Is that because it's overused or they were located originally?
So that, that's.
In that area or what?
That's total failed systems, not just for the specific.
So why did they totally fail?
They're, they're limited in duration. I, I'm not an expert on this by any means, but they're only. Yeah, it could be that.
Could be mechanical failure.
So my point is related to, to rentals here, we need to be cautious about. You know, I. If I remember, we were, we were, uh. It was becoming pretty messy because we were. Hearing about septic tanks and whatnot, failures, how does this affect rentals? And we were, I think, going down. Some of this process. Without a lot of information. So I just think we ought to do our best tonight and just decode, uh, our recommendations to you as best we can.
But the idea behind this, I was trying to do a cause effect analysis. Can we determine that there is a correlation, cause effect of. Short term rentals equals failed septic system. So that's what the data proves is that. We don't see one, not in this county. So then do we need to solve this on a front end or a back end, right? Do we need to solve it as a prevention mechanism? Or as an enforcement mechanism? So.
In my opinion, I'll, I'll say, I think, I, because I've switched. I think we ought to leave our occupancy rules more or less where, where they are because it doesn't seem to be causing a problem. And, but what we should add is some, some way of dealing with it on the backend. So if there is a failure of a septic system in a short term, what do we do then? At, at a minimum.
Yeah, but.
At a minimum.
Is only one factor. Um, your, your occupancy is also very important with regard to parking. And noise, all kinds of other stuff.
Well, parking, we, we, and we have that. Uh, currently, I think it's either or to driven by. The lesser of our formula relating to bedrooms or parking.
Right, but I think we need to look at, because I think our bedroom occupancy is way too high. Uh, for a parking standpoint. And I think we need to define bedrooms. Um, I think, I think they, those, those things still needs to be done, whether it's. I mean, if you look at the pre-slate area, we have problems with short term rentals, but they don't relate to septic because we don't have septic.
Who is we?
Neighbors.
Okay, so neighbors, but I, does the planning department have? Which is our charge here, a problem with. This document as it's currently written. I mean, are you getting complaints that are in violation of this document? Or are you getting lots of complaints or?
So if we roll back to what, three months ago when I started with this, I had included this as a. I had identified a, um. A difference between how this was being interpreted and utilized versus how the code read specifically. We, it was all around the twenty max, right? So after twenty, then a CUP is required. So. Under previous. Use of this code or interpretation, we said, okay, twenty per lot or parcel. The code kind of, the way it really reads is per structure, per home. If you have multiple homes on a property, you can have multiple twenty, twenty person. Units, so you can have sixty, eighty people. Um, depending on the number of bedrooms, uh, on a single piece of land. So. We had then gotten challenged and lost an appeal. Uh, on a vacation rental permit. Uh, I think those folks showed up and voiced their concern over their code changes as well. Um, and then it was asked by the planning commission, you guys and say, hey, let's do a full review of this. Give us some other options and how to, how to regulate. Um, max occupancy. Um, so this first green box is kind of the initial how we started. Um, and this removes panhandle health from the equation. Um, and then adds it as a, to the backend saying, you know, if there's a failing septic system, then you revoke the permit or suspend the permit or something along those lines. So that's, that's what we drafted up here in response to kind of that other analysis, but. This is where we started. Um, and this is kind of where we ended is this, what, seven, six page document on a bunch of different changes. So we thought if we're gonna do one, we might as well look through and make all the other small changes of this that we, we should.
And I might add to your comment here. You said, and re, and revoke the permit, but then we discovered. That we have a lot of rentals in the county that don't have a permit.
Right.
So we don't really have any effective. Regulation or oversight.
That's what the software is gonna do. Yeah, that's, that was what I just been working on the last month and a half is. Getting approval and funding for a software to get us higher compliance.
So, and we'll have that empirical evidence within a year's time to, to maybe modify this again, come back to it.
The two are unrelated. They're unrelated in the sense that you get a permit, but you get a permit for a certain. Occupancy, a certain parking plan, this, so. In order to make sure that the permits that we're giving are in accordance with best management practices, which, you know, uh, Jake and I have talked to. Three different companies about best management practices and, and, you know, we are way out of, out of balance with that. So what we need to do is bring these ordinance just back into best management practices. And then, and then issue, well, apparently you don't because you're talking about. Permits, which is, you know, the, the front.
Two, two separate, two separate things here. I'm just, I'm willing to go on here and get into the, to, to the tracks of the issue.
Well, we've also taken some time, like, and I, hopefully you have. To look at some other, uh, permits that are close to our area, portaling call. And, and we are exceedingly lenient compared to a lot of the other. So the way we got into the enforcement was. This is how it started and then we started talking about how, why have a permit if you're not gonna enforce it and then Jake's. Jake and Alan have gone above and beyond. To address that. So now we're back to where we were.
All right, so, um. Yeah, I would like to address the occupancy sections. I don't really have any suggestions with regard to, uh. Either the residential use table or commercial use table.
Well, the, the reason behind this is the state code says it's a residential use and for whatever reason it got placed as a commercial use. So. Just to ensure that no commercial standards ever get applied to a vacation rental in the future, I say let's move it to residential. Be in compliance with that state statute. So that seems like an easy no brainer.
I just have one quick question if I may, Mr. Chairman. Um, we're, they're not permitted in the forest zone district, but for some reason. Um.
Hmm, oh, yeah.
For some reason, I thought the Idaho state statute said they're allowable in all dis, in all districts.
I think he may be.
I don't know, it's permitted, permitted. But for some reason, Idaho state statute, I believe, allows it in, in every district.
I'll, I'll read the state statute. It's pretty clear.
Okay. All right, so then, uh, if nobody has a problem with that, it's good to be, it's important to call four eight four.
So what it says is that a county nor city can enact and. Uh, or enforce an ordinance that has the express or practical effect of prohibiting short term rentals or vacation rentals in the county or city.
Oh, yeah.
So if we had a prohibition in all zones, that would essentially say no short term rentals are allowed at all. That, that's against state statute. What we've done is define what zones in which we feel are. The, you know, best places for short term rentals. So if you think we should add it because. Um, residential use, right? You can build a single family dwelling in the forest forty. I believe, I have to check these table. Um, then we can add that as a permitted use there.
All right, so let's move to four eight four. Seems reasonable.
Um, in, I don't know where everybody else is in. Uh, where are we? Four eight, four, C, one, uh, B. On the renewal application.
I, I just wanted to answer Mr. Lynn Scott's question. Forest forty and. So it's only the industrial use. The industrial zone is the only one that does not allow for a single family dwelling.
Okay.
So. So I guess any, anyone in the commercial with a single family dwelling or forest forty with a single family dwelling are not permitted. The use of single or vacation rental, so.
So, so where are you doing?
Um, of four eight, four, C, one, B, where it's talking about the timing for when a. Oh, okay. Person needs to submit a renewal request. Sixty days, within sixty days can be interpreted to be sixty days before or sixty days after. And I assume we mean sixty days before.
Yep.
We should save that.
Is there anything in B we wanted to address? We're in C now, but, yeah, there were some changes in.
Yeah, I don't.
In B.
Oh, D.
So is that not covered under C? Like if it's expired, because it expires.
Pretty.
Uh, uh, no, I would argue they would say essentially you've given them a sixty day grace period.
Okay.
Because sixty, within sixty days could be interpreted to be sixty days after or, and then if, if you don't get, if you're gonna get the permit. After, within sixty days after, then it expires, which I don't think. After, within sixty days after, then it expires, which I don't think that's our intent.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So are you rewriting it prior, within sixty days prior to the expiration of the vacation?
Right. And, and you don't wanna say within. Sixty. You, you wanna say, really, it's prior sixty days or more, isn't that what you're really after?
Yeah, yeah.
You don't want it in the last sixty days.
Yeah, you don't wanna do it on day sixty, cause that's like sixty days prior.
Sub, shall be submitted more than sixty days prior to the expiration of the vacation.
Or that'd be shall not.
Yeah, could somebody, could somebody do it six months prior?
Well, they could, and.
We, we don't want, what we really are trying to do is like, we, we've had a number of people say that thirty-day window is like. We forget, right, or we don't know, or we'd like to get it done sooner so we can get renewed sooner, so that's the idea behind this is that. Um, they have to get it, you know, within sixty days of it, when you're prior to expiration, stuff like that.
When they, maybe it should be beginning sixty days, so it's like, or later than thirty days, thirty days.
I will, I'll put a note on this and find a way to reword that.
You know, you probably also don't want them coming in on the last day, but. I see.
But so long as it's, it's submitted prior to expiration.
So here's where, here's where I think we may end up having an issue. I expect our discussion to go in the direction of there's gonna be certain consequences for permittees. Who, when we go look at the records from Decker, we say, ah, you've had seven violations in the last twelve months. And some of that may require some investigation before you say. Make a decision on whether or not you're willing to renew their permit, or on what basis you're willing to renew their permit. So I think you wanna allow yourself some time to do that research, cause I think we're gonna have some. At least, I'm gonna be arguing, but we have some consequences when we go talk to Decker and they say, oh, yeah, we've had all kinds of complaints from this property over the last twelve months.
Yeah, they actually filed the uh renewal. Within that time, required time period, if it gets extended, if their application gets extended because of looking at prior. Problems, at least they, they applied during that.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
It doesn't say they have to issue, yeah, the county has to issue.
Well, that was, that was my next question, is it gonna seem here the county must issue or shall issue, or whatever, puts in next days of the application?
It's like when you go apply for a driver's license, as long as you applied for it before your other one expired. A lot of times they said, well, we're really backed up, so you're not gonna get it in the mail for two months this time.
We're okay with that.
So as long as they made the application in that window, they're satisfying what you want in this paragraph. But I agree with you, it could take longer than the sixty days if they're looking on fraction.
Right, sure. So I, I have a. Okay, we don't.
Um, sooner than sixty days.
Does a site, site plan in, in B, is that imply at least that the, you're identifying all the property lines? Supposedly just a drawing.
Back on B, we're back, BH. To B, B one H.
Man, it should show all the property lines. And maybe even dimensions.
So showing location of all property lines, all structures and.
But the question I would have is to what degree of accuracy are we telling them they need to get a survey done, or?
No, I always say, it's similar to a building location permit, it can be hand-drawn, but dimensions on it, doesn't have to be to scale.
So is that, but dimensions, expand to say, shows setbacks to the property lines, like you would on a BLP?
Well, do we have a basis to deny it?
Yeah.
If.
Setbacks or.
Cause we're not, we're not looking at validating the structures with this.
Well, that's, that's the question, because I, I don't think it's a setback issue, I think it's a, it relates to the parking issue.
Well, then the parking plan standard should maybe modify that.
They're required to give a parking plan.
In addition, but, but they need to show that it's on their property, so.
Oh, we do have addition of, of site plan or site.
Per site, so.
What's the?
So the definition per site is the land area subject to the land disturbing activity associated with the destruction, which is titled that. The site shall be needed to include ample areas of land disturbance, areas designated or stockpiling it toward the estimated urban.
Next, we're, we're talking about providing for a use, not for uh like a change to the property.
I guess. Maybe we can extend this, but does, let's say this person has forty acres per site plan, but they're. Just wanting it on their house in the VRP, and it's right off the road, the house is there, and the parking is right there. Does the commission still want to require to show the full forty acres, or just the area that the use is being created?
Well, I mean, that's not the example that I was thinking, I was thinking of more like the recreational lots, which are substantially.
Yeah, we have sixty-acre properties, right?
Five hundred or whatever, they're not, they're not big. And on those, that's where the parking issue becomes really important. And you have to be able, you should be able to show that your proposed parking, whether it's on the parking plan or the site plan. That the, the proposed parking off-site or off-street is within your property.
And the use is taking place where is that?
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, if you have a forty-acre property, you probably could say. It's not, that's pretty big. Anyway. Alright, so. Are we gonna address fees, fees in a different section?
So it's not, it's not on the, I mean, the planning commission make, can make a recommendation for a fee change, but it's really, that's a planning department and board decision. So I do a fee study as to, like, do our fees, are our current fees covering the, the cost to the county for that? So when I do that analysis, I can then say, hey, here's my, here's my numbers behind this, and this is where I'm at, and this is the justification behind the change. So I'd say focus on, on the ordinance and uh leave the fee decision and uh analysis to the planning department.
Alright.
So we took out the latitude longitude, I don't think that's necessary, we've hadn't, had a problem. Um finding locations of, of properties, so I'm guessing that's why it was in there before. The maximum occupancy, um, this is in the application contents, right? So it's what's being requested, not what's being permitted, cause, you know, they might not know what the permitted number is. We also have had a scenarios where sewer districts are charged based on the occupancy permitted. So it might be to the applicant saying, I really only wanna rent this out for three people, so rather than permit them for twelve. We only permit it for three, so they, this, their sewer bills don't go up. So just kind of a heads up as some of the rationale behind those other two changes on MB.
Okay, do we need to ask them to tell us the number of bedrooms?
That comes on a little bit.
Yeah. Well, if, if, if we're gonna be, if we're gonna be determining occupancy in any way as a function of how many bedrooms there are, we need to have them tell us how many bedrooms. And that needs to be part of the application, otherwise we're guessing.
I'm wondering if they need to go to some sort of total split footage, maybe.
I don't think that's a function of it.
Well, so, you know, you, you open up a hide-a-dad, it's a bedroom. You know, you open, you know, you throw a sleeping bag underneath, it's a bedroom, functionally. You know, you've still got.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna come to, we, we had discussions about how you define bedroom, we're gonna come to that at some point in time, but.
We're gonna come to it real soon here.
Have a window?
I don't care about that, does it have a bed is a more, it's a more germane question in my mind. If it has a bed.
Alright, so, yeah, so I guess, I know that would be part of the request to, to have their number of bedrooms.
Seems like we need to have them tell us what they think that number is, right?
So do we wanna go into the occupancy and then come back to that and figure out how we, how we wanna agree on?
Alright, let's go to occupancy.
And it seems to be the elephant in, right?
What we got here now, three persons per bedroom. Plus three is just way beyond, okay, that's second, where are you now?
Section, it's in the green box.
I would say.
We're all different suggestions, weren't they?
Yes, so each, each one of these boxes is a different way that. After probably thirty hours of talking about this as planners, we came up with as to the best ways.
Different alternatives.
Different alternatives.
The idea is to pick one, modify it, not have all three or four.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 it's not a this or this, gotta choose your own adventures, please, just, let's, let's try to find one.
Well, I think we can modify the first one. And make it. Let's see, I would be happy with, I would, I would change three to two. Um. Two persons plus maybe two. Uh, and, uh have that be, the, the maximum be something like ten or twelve.
So.
People in a, in a, in a house is fine.
Sure.
So then I would, then I would also define bedroom, and I would define it. As it has to have an, an egress, a window.
I. I don't want to, I, I, then you look into, okay, do I have to then qualify my compliance guys to go out and inspect and say? Yes, a human can fit through this, and then we're now responsible.
This is what I would suggest, is that you have a square, under penalty of perjury, that they have three bedrooms that you should, which have, has an egress.
And maybe the Jacob's ladder or something, they have to go through the ground if it's on the site or.
If a word swear, so that, you know, I think most people are gonna be truthful. They have to swear, oh.
Yeah. Um.
Most, that's one thing I was curious about, just kind of tangential with this, so the company that's looking into this. Are they going to eventually look at an advertisement for a B and B against the regulation, against the code?
So we can put in their stopgaps so that if we permit it for ten people and then they list it for fifteen, we get a flag, so yes.
Could do the same thing with bedrooms.
We can also put a note in there saying, you know, all listings shall have your vacation rental permit number, so that's another one, um.
Acknowledge the fact that it is permitted.
Mm-hmm. But. Um, and we actually had a representative from Airbnb get on the. Call with us during our workshop with the board and saying, hey, I, I work to try to help get high, you know, higher compliance rates for different minutes of palaces. I thought it was really interesting, yeah, he never followed up with an email, I, it's the first and only time I ever heard from him, so.
Well, the interesting thing about that was, he was, he was somewhat suggesting that we could use them as part of our regulatory system. Which is, which is uh scriptly prohibited by state statute.
Yeah, it really is.
We can't have a marketplace enforce our regulations.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So back to the idea of regulating bedrooms, it, it's almost, it's almost like enacting a quasi-building code. In a sense, for this one specific use, for like multifamily dwellings uh under conditional use, we don't look at bedroom counts. For the only other, the only other time the code mentions bedrooms is an accessory dwelling units. And there, it's been really tenuous as to whether or not we can enforce. We've been, we've told our compliance guys, don't go into buildings, cause we essentially are liable then for what the, what happens inside of a building and how it's built, so. It's typically take people's word for it and review the site plan, and that's about it.
That's what you'd be doing here, I mean, basically, you have to swear that they have three bedrooms and they all have, you know, a lawful egress.
So then, so take the backside of this on, on enforcement. So we have a neighbor come in and then say, okay, I see that the advertisement is for a three-bedroom, but I know, cause I've walked through there, that was fine. How do I validate that concern and then, um?
There's five bedrooms?
Sure.
Well, they're concerned.
That now they have, you know, X number of people in there, then the application is false.
The permit would only be for.
So if, or the other way around, if they, they permit it for five and it's only has three. Like, how, how do I enforce that regulation to say there's this many bedrooms in there and that's what it's permitted for?
So. I, I, I submit an application, and I say, I have three bedrooms, I swear under penalty of perjury that, you know, it's got a lawful egress, okay? So then I would get, under my scenario here, we'd get two people per bedroom plus two.
Definitely.
So let's add a three-bedroom, so that's six people, and plus two would be eight, right?
So when, when Sally neighbor comes in and says, there's only one bedroom in that house, Jake, what are you gonna do about it? That's, that's what I'm getting at.
There's only one bedroom in the house?
Sure. Like, how do I validate that concern?
And you'd have to check it out. Yeah, so. It will not enter.
So, you could, you could. When you have an inventory here by this uh overseer, which, which, which company is announcing this?
Deckard Technologies, so the RentalScape is the software.
And I'm assuming you will in-house and start comparing those, cause you're gonna have an administrative person start comparing. The information that's coming from them with the permit and see if they're in compliance.
Sure.
You're not gonna wait for someone to complain while you could, but.
The idea is to be proactive, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't see anyone advertising less bedrooms than they actually have in a rental. If they have three bedrooms, they're gonna advertise three bedrooms, if they, if they're advertising. Four, I mean, these, these. Yeah, I don't wanna overanalyze this problem, I, I take people. Uh at their word, and quite frankly, we've not been doing, the county's not been able to do much of anything until the commissioners now have. Uh, uh have this agreement now with Decker, so when that information comes in, you will probably be back looking at all of this.
Mm-hmm.
Once again, so I would just say, rather than trying to. Get into too much detail here, let's just uh agree to get something on the books for you to get past it.
Sure, I, I mean, the, the next three are different ways that I feel that. Um or based on the planner's analysis are the best way to regulate occupancy based on zoning, cause zoning is what establishes our densities. And this is in, this is the way that's enforceable for us, rather than looking at the bedroom count, is looking at.
Well, that's what you have now.
I, I know it is.
I mean, I.
And I, I still disagree with it, so.
Well, but that's what you have now, and that's, that seems to be what all the surrounding jurisdictions that have this type of ordinance, they all use bedrooms.
And, and they all have building codes.
Well, okay, but I don't think you need to have a building code in order to figure out if there's a egress. But what I would say is, you, you have the people swear that this is true, saying there that it's all subject to inspection.
Mm-hmm.
So that they know that, you know, you might send an inspector out to see whether they're telling the truth. And if they're not, they're, you know, if they aren't. But there's gonna be some consequences, like, like Dave said, I mean, we did, we need to build in some consequences here. So, you know, I, I, I just don't, I, I think that most people, most people are gonna be honest. Believe it or not, even as a lawyer, I'll say that most people try to be honest.
Um, I have four people in my compliance team that'll probably disagree with you. I swear it's only this, that you have, there's three stories to that. Huh?
I always see the people.
Well, they go, they inspect all, all buildings, but, yeah.
I mean, to me, to me, uh, um. Uh, you know, I think, I think that, that this first box probably is, is workable in terms of what I just suggested. I would just also say that if we need to deal something, we can deal with an ADU, and if they're using an ADU for, uh.
Some sort of a bunkhouse.
Yeah, that has a bathroom, so it's not just a four walls and a door.
So who are we concerned about that, who are we concerned about, the people renting it or the people that are owning it?
Well, what, what I'm concerned about is, you, you get, you.
I don't require a bedroom or a bathroom for a single-family dwelling. That's what I'm getting at, it's like, I don't regulate normal home building that way, why would I regulate short-term rentals that way?
Cause you're regulating, you're regulating a, a use which is regulated by the county.
Mm-hmm.
To protect the neighborhood, so you're trying to, trying to, to, to limit occupancy to some reasonable level. Based upon the facilities that they have on that property. So if you have, if you, if you, if somebody can pull in a bunch of these sheds. And put six people in each shed without a bathroom, that's not a good situation.
Right.
So.
Regulating single-family dwellings is regulating the use of, as well, it's the same, same idea, this is, we can't view this as a commercial use, it's a residential use. Right, so we can't, I don't think we should enforce higher standards for this specific use than we would at a single-family dwelling. Other than, I'm sorry, like, very specific.
Except for this is a commercial use.
No, it's not, state, state statute says it's not, it's a residential use, that's what we started with, right? So I can understand max occupants and parking.
If that's the case, Jake, then why have any limitation on occupancy?
I'd say have a limitation on occupancy.
Same theory, you don't, you don't limit the occupancy of a single-family dwelling.
Right.
You could have a hundred people. But this is different, this is like a, this is sort of a. I hate to say privileged, but it's, it's a, it's a right that is given to a landlord that he can make some money off his property. But he does, has to do it within certain limitations, so there's a difference. Um. But yeah, if you go down that route, you know. But yeah, if you go down that route, you know.
And just the fact that it's short term.
And it's short term.
Constant turnover, you got new people. The people coming in need to have the same regulation as the last people in the next people coming in. There's no variation there, so it takes the takes the unknown supposedly out of it.
But I'd still, if I were ever subletting. Uh homes, the short-term vacation rental, every couch would be a height of that and there'd be two rollaways and a hall of blocks.
So I mean, this.
Everything conceivably, everything with a roof, that's got a roof over it can conceivably be.
So when you.
A bedroom.
So you're gonna, you're gonna go rent a place, you're gonna go on vacation, gonna rent a place, you get on. Uh VRVO, Airbnb and a number of other sites.
VRBO.
VRBO. You you look up the site and it starts showing pictures, it starts showing definition of it, it tells you in there. And it says number of bedrooms, three, and then it says what beds are in the bedroom.
Yes, yep.
All this kind of stuff. So I mean, it's there and people are, and I've rented a number of those things over the last five years. And everyone I've been at is exactly as they portrayed it on the site, exactly. No, there's not a secret. It says in there, if you want another bed, let us know. Someone do. We can provide a rollaway or a crib for a kid or something. But you know, it's not a. Because they don't. I'm gonna say they don't charge for head. You're renting the place as as facilitated. They don't charge what, you got six people, that's a hundred and twelve dollars. Well, you're twelve people, that's that's a hundred and eighty-five dollars.
It's a fixed fee per night.
Typically. So again, that's what they're doing. It's the place, place as described in the file and and facility.
So don't, don't take my comment necessarily as being fundamentally disagreement with the suggestion that you made Alan. About two per plus two with a limit of, you think you said fifteen?
Ten, twelve.
Ten, twelve, something in there. I, just out of curiosity, I did a search all of Bonner County on VRVO. For I wanted to have twelve adults. And there's a large number of properties that offer much more than twelve. So. I mean, I'm looking at one right here. Now it's seven bedrooms. They advertise twenty-four, sleeps twenty-four, five bathrooms, five plus bathrooms. So it's.
It's a hotel? It's probably in the seven figures.
So so there's a lot of places that are up in the fifteen and over and commonly they have five, six bedrooms. So they're not small houses and and a a a commensurate number of bathrooms for the number of bedrooms that they have. I mean, one question I would have is if we set the regulation at a level kind of in the neighborhood of what you're suggesting. What would these people's alternative be? To get permission to do that. And it'd be a conditional use permit and it'd only be reviewing the standards in the vacation rental. There's some ordinances out there that have like a minor, major categories of short-term rentals. So it's like if it's. Um I've seen this on, most of these are in cities, mind you. So. And some of this, we're talking about, it's like, almost like we're talking these specific small lots that all look like and feel like city lots, but. This applies to, you know, every forty-acre property out there as well. So just kind of keep that in mind. But yeah, we have, there are some regulations I've seen and uh I could give you guys some examples of a level like major, minor, or if it's, you know. Yeah, so they have some additional standards, some maybe enhanced site plans. So maybe that's where you have a scale drawing. You have a, you know. So that's maybe something to keep in mind. I mean. There are a lot, there are a large number, there's probably fifty of them in the county that are that are advertising occupancy levels above. What you're suggesting and they're big places. They're not, you know, trying to squeeze a bunch of people in on high defense.
How how it would be complaint driven, but again, with Deckard uh coming in here and giving us. Empirical information, I mean. How do you know if someone's got four people in the bedroom that night?
Well, you don't, but you do know what they're advertising.
But yeah, but.
And and what and what they're advertising i- is pretty much gonna, in in my experience and my judgment and renting these places, it's gonna limit. How many people they rent to. I mean, if if they say fifteen, whenever the number is. It's gonna be fifteen. First of all, anybody who wants sixteen is gonna look at another house.
Most, yeah, I know. Most people that are advertising for, pick a number, ten people, they don't want twenty people in there.
Right.
Monitoring and I self, at least I, we're probably trying to create a mountain out of a molehill there and. Until you get that empirical evidence to really know what the problem is, I don't know that endorsing any of these are. Acceptable at this time.
Sure. I I'm fine.
During it once people realize that it's no longer the wild west, how much the problem, how much.
Back to.
The current problem will go away.
No, it it's not gonna go away. I mean, if there's no, if if you you have to get a permit, but. It's Katie bar the door, you can, you can, you can rent to as many people as you can fit in the door. You haven't solved any problem. It's still gonna have the same impact on the neighborhood, still gonna have the same impact on parking. You gotta have some regulations. You gotta have. I mean, I think what we should arguing about it really is, is what Dave is talking about and that is, what's the right number, you know? Not whether we should have a number. I mean, getting a permit is meaningless unless there's some kind of restrictions and some type of regulation.
You didn't hear me. I was, I my comment presupposed that there were restrictions attached to permit.
So I I mean, probably was something I'm guessing, I'll move a little bit somewhere, I guess we agree on. There needs to be enough parking for the occupancy rate that we set. And and there, I think the crux of this discussion is what is our assumption about? Number of cars per per person or.
And that is. That is the overriding problem. We don't care for a neighbor and they only have. Three Suburbans, but they've got eighteen people in there. And they only have two bedrooms. Do we care?
If they're quiet, in addition to all of that, eighteen people are quiet, I, no.
Protect here is the neighbors.
Right.
Are the neighbors.
So that's mainly parking.
Suburbans each towed in a boat.
Well.
And you've got a trailer to account for.
Oh, yeah. So I think.
Well, we we've addressed it in this, the bottom part of this. So we, we propose that you move from four people to three, that seems to be a better. Yeah, uh per per vehicle and then all accessory uses in addition of parking in conjunction with the vacation rental. Shall be located off-street, on on-street parking in connection with a vacation rental is prohibited.
Which is where VRBO asked a question in their application.
Yeah.
How many vehicles? Because I mean, there's, there's a lot of times these VRBOs or B and Bs would be rented for a business meeting. Over a weekend and they all show up in individual cars. Eight people, eight cars.
And then we also have under permit posting the parking plan, right, that shows, it's clearly shows like where you can park at. So it's a, it it's trying to help prevent uh complaints.
What's there?
That's assuming people that are renting are gonna be reviewing the site postings and being in a compliance.
Yeah, I, you know, that's like Dave said. You take what you need and you match it to a place that provides what you want. If it doesn't. Go to that place with five bedrooms.
Randy actually brought up a good point. These people come. With with boats, boat trailers. So is the, they have to have off-street parking for the boat trail.
Yeah, that's what we just read. All accessory uses in additional parking in conjunction where.
And they have been renting out their house. And a guy showed up with a trailer. He got it down there and couldn't give it out. Didn't know how to bag it up.
I think, I think where I struggle with your suggestion, Alan, is with the the max limit. So that um I I think it should be two per bedroom. That to me is pretty obvious. I I'm not sure whether we should say plus two or plus four. I mean, I know a lot of these places you'll find, they'll take, they'll take a bedroom and they'll put. Two or three or four sets of bunk beds in it for kids. So.
Yeah.
E- even without resorting to sleepers and sleeping bags on the floor and that kind of stuff, they they get quite a bit more than two per bedroom in some cases. But if you have a six or seven bedroom house, which some of these are, then imposing the additional maximum is gonna kick them out of this. And and push them into the CUP and so and if it's a really big house like that and they have.
Just use the bedroom for the occupants for bedroom.
Bedroom and parking.
Additional one and parking.
And parking.
And not have a mess.
Right. And that way, if they have a huge house with six, seven, eight bedrooms. It takes care of itself. And then we have, we also, I mean, the county already has a noise ordinance. We've talked about the fact that it needs to be rewritten desperately, but it's kind of meaningless the way it's written from a technical perspective. It's also really.
I mean, I I I agree with that. I can live with that. I I do think that we still need to kind of deal with the A D U.
I agree with that.
Yeah, that's a.
Well, and I still think that if we're not gonna restrict them, you're gonna have no.
Max?
Yes, that's the word. You have to define that.
Well, I'm suggesting define it with a lawful egress.
Yeah, but.
We do. I I agree. We need to have some agreement on what a bedroom is. We haven't been challenged on it and we've been doing this for five years now. And what is the criteria that you use? Whatever they tell us what a bedroom is. It's the same as Panhandle Health. They regulate based on bedrooms and they don't have a definition for it. It goes on what the applicant tells them. They do push back a little bit. I had a meeting with them last week or the week before and. It's like, well, this is a, it's a flex room is what the the new term is. And it's like, well, it's got a closet in it, it's got a window. It's like, wow, that that sure looks like a bedroom. You sure it's not a bedroom? So sometimes folks will come back and say, oh, yeah, it is. So. Well, in this case, the people are gonna be. Pushing to define rooms as bedrooms that you might not ordinarily ordinarily define as a bedroom. And you think that's the direction it's gonna go because they're gonna wanna maximize their occupancy.
Sure.
Because that maximizes their ability to charge money. Um so they're gonna be pushing in the other direction. They're gonna, they're gonna define rooms as bedrooms that we wouldn't normally think of as bedrooms, maybe. Maybe.
So see what the problem is with having a lawful egress.
Yeah.
Seems to me that in some way, it respect protects the county too. I mean. Wearing, they have a lawful egress, so they can't, you know, they they don't got a bedroom that people can be out, there's a fire.
And we're gonna have to supply with that information what lawful is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lovable lies regularly. Fire code of some sort.
There is.
We don't, we don't have a fire code. We have a building location.
Find all this stuff because you don't really have any basis.
This county.
That's what I've been saying.
Trying to define all this stuff when you don't have any things. That gives you uh a basis to justify what you're saying.
Yeah, we don't have a fire code, we don't have a.
You don't know a bedroom, what a bedroom is? Doesn't make sense to me. I mean, most houses have bedrooms, even if.
They know how many bedrooms I have.
It it's interesting. How many bedrooms I have. If I wanna advertise.
It is if you wanna have a certain occupancy. You have to swear that you have a certain number of bedrooms that meet a certain.
From what I've been hearing, I think. I'm just throwing it out there. There are the blue, the purple and the saffron. I think if we go through those, maybe put a pin in the reins right now, which we're kind of keep going in bedrooms. May maybe what fit into my, what you said about. We don't have definitions. Why are we doing it? Would hit on the things that we do see, which are the number of dwellings. On a property, but currently right now, if you have. You know, uh you could have three dwellings on your property and right now is currently as it sits. You could have, it it's a large enough bedroom count. You know, you could have twenty in each one of those. Plus, we've also hit on parcel size, right? Let's say, go back to what Dave said about this seven-bedroom house. Well, let's say that is on the lake shore, but as we know, most of the lots on the lake shore are small. Right? And then in the saffron and the bottom option, it talks about that because we're we're, because we're talking about. We have no way of regulating norms, no way of enforcing that. What we do have is the capacity to limit the occupancy, right? So if it's a small lot. The saffron builds into that. Well, yeah, you can have twenty people, but also it's not only based on the parking and and. But it's also based on the size of a lot. So I think if 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 the commission opens with reading the the blue, the purple and the saffron. Maybe one of those better suits what you guys are trying to get at in that combination.
Yeah. I I've read them all and I think they they kind of all, except for the first one. They kind of deal all with a maximum occupancy. That that Dave mentioned, which is why I didn't focus on. I think, I think modification of first one is still the best.
So let's talk them, the merits and demerits of the other ones. The the blue one is far more permissive. Will you have a max occupancy per dwelling, right? And then a different max occupancy for accessory dwelling. So you can.
What's the difference between a temporary shelter and access or and an accessory building?
So accessory structures or accessory buildings are like a shop, a shed. But there's something else on the property that's not designated as a dwelling, right? So unless they have a change of use that modifies that and then they meet all of the building. Uh location permit code and have to get, go through P H D, then they can't be considered a dwelling. So you can't use like a. Here's my house, a three-bedroom, and here's the shed, we're gonna call it bedroom or a chavin or whatever it is you wanna call it, right? Um she shed, we're gonna put a bed in there and call it a dwelling or call it a an additional bedroom in conjunction with the house, right? We finished this cedar shed, so now we're gonna call it an extra bedroom. In art, in plainer lingo, that's still an accessory structure. It's not a dwelling, accessory building. And that comes out of the residential use table.
What's a temporary shelter?
Temporary structure would be like a tent, uh you know. Uh I hate the word yurt because some of them are permanent and some of them are just canvas, right? But essentially like a. Temporary, it's like. We don't have it defined specifically. I would consider it like a tent or even a canvas wall tent or something like that. Something that wouldn't require a building location permit.
So if something requires a location permit, that could be.
If it's a dwelling. So if it's been permitted as a dwelling, that's the idea. And now we have P H D doing reviews and we we. We won't sign off on the finaling of a permit until Panhandle Health regulations are met. So that kind of helps some of this argument as to what's being used as a.
What definite, what's the definition of something that gets permitted as a dwelling?
If it's, I, we'd have a definition for single-family dwelling, we have a definition for accessory dwelling for an RV dwelling unit. So each of those has its own, I would have to pull it up entitled twelve, chapter eight, I don't recall.
Well, for what it's worth, uh and to get away from the colored boxes, I like box number three. Is just simple, straightforward. And I think, uh you know, you can change the numbers if you want. To twenty or whatever, but what I do like about it, which is really the crux of all of this, I think, is about street parking.
Yeah, so each of them has the limitation shall also be limited by off-street parking, right? Whichever is less. So if you go off three, this goes, this takes into account. Your double, triple density rule in the code. So if you have ten acres under our five, you can have two single-family dwellings. So maybe the first dwelling is fifteen, second dwelling is twelve. Third dwelling, et cetera. So we can also put a limitation for accessory dwelling units if we wanna add that to this specific code.
I understand. So.
Give it a second. You wanna take a five-minute recess? Or we make sure we get this all set back up? We just lost it again. Says I'm connected. That's weird. It was like six oh one. No, because this should be on the little wifi box too.
How long did they say that we're going to be down with the mainframe? Who knows?
And like a couple hours. So, because they're replacing a whole firewall. It was like a hardware change. So we think this is going to come back up? The highs are excellent.
We're gonna come back. We're gonna come back.
Yeah, that was last Saturday.
Think we've got all of our women working now. Uh, so, uh. Want to continue on Jake.
So I think we were talking, was it the blue box or the purple box? Purple box?
Is that the first, second or fourth box?
That's the third. Put a color blind in the room.
Okay.
Uh, it's the one with the table of, uh, different occupancies. So. Can we, um, can we agree on the changes and be, they're the same in each one of these different scenarios?
Yeah, I like them.
Okay, great. Does that would help? Because we do have a number of requests and reoccurring requests for short terminals on, um, like RVs essentially. Or RV dwelling units. So this, that would define it further that. We can't use it. And it very clearly, I think we have a change at the bottom that changes the RV dwelling unit code. It says it's more or less prohibited.
Clarifying question that relates to the maximum question. Um, there's a comment, correct me if I'm wrong, but in a C and P, there's no provision for that to be recurring. It's granted once and then it exists forever?
Typically, yes.
So is there, is that the way it would be applied here if, if we didn't impose a maximum occupancy? And somebody came in and applied for a CUP because they wanted something greater than the maximum, would they then have? Would that CUP be in place forever? And then it also relates back to the permit fee question then, because. They paid whatever, which is my next question. I want to get, because I don't, I honestly don't know. What's it cost to get a CUP?
Sure.
I, I'd like to know what kind of a burden are we imposing on somebody who's got a seven bedroom home? And they want to have an occupancy greater than whatever max we might impose here. How much different is that going to, difference is that going to make in terms of the permitting process for them versus the, the term rental permit?
And, and that, the one that you had pulled up, they, they do have a CUP because they want to have twenty-three people instead. I think county. Maxed it at twenty or twenty-one.
Twenty.
Twenty. So they actually came and got a CUP for twenty-three.
A CUP? Yeah, that's what you would do here if the membership.
I'm, I'm pulling up this fee schedule. I don't have the fees memorized. I wish I did. There's only so much.
Trying to compare it to the annual renewal.
Yeah, oh, the, I mean, we've, we're, we're creating a system where we're kind of banking on the annual renewal fees to continue to. Pay for the cost of software.
See, you could essentially game it and anybody can come in and apply for a CP.
Uh, well, I've thought of that, but now that you.
That's what I, that's, that's the first thing, like, is look at, okay, it's going to cost me two hundred bucks for this or four hundred bucks for that. Like, oh, great.
Lower the max number so everyone has to get a CUP in addition to the permit.
So it would probably be this one. It says residential uses other than duplex. So duplex is five hundred, uh, it would be seven hundred plus ten dollars per unit. I think that's aimed for a multi-use, like multi-family.
But there's other things that are required in the application for usage use that are not.
Yes.
Which costs money. That you don't spend on vacation.
So we could impose, I mean, we've only had one that I'm aware of that have come in for a CUP beyond.
The twenty.
Yeah, the twenty.
Current twenty.
And that's in like five years. So I mean, we could establish a specific. Um, we could add it to the ordinance. The CUP must be renewed in accordance with the vacation rental permit code. Uh, I don't know if that's legal. I, I could have to get legal opinion on it. The other thing I think we should begin to this is some kind of allowance, uh, for like a short duration. That's something I pulled from, uh. CDA, Quarter Lane, um, they have like a two-week, two-week buffer. Like you can, you can list it for two weeks sometime during the year. Anything beyond two weeks you need a, a permit for.
Oh.
So it allows for like a, if there's an event going on to. I, I was in Oregon whenever the big solar eclipse happened and there was like everyone in town. They took on, you know, the campsites were flooded. Everyone went out of state and they listed their houses on Airbnb for like eight hundred or nine or something. A lot of people came from.
CDA.
Yeah. So that's, they, they call it the Iron Man clause in, in, uh. For the land. So.
Some people do that here.
Exactly. So, yeah, so festival week or any kind of one of those events. So we can just put in like some kind of two-week offer. I, I don't know where we put it, but I could figure it out. At a supervision. I think it kind of makes sense. It also allows for. Uh, once it gets listed, we don't technically have violations for someone that didn't know. We could send one notice like, hey, you're going to need this if you're going to go beyond two weeks.
I, I think that's a great idea myself.
It adds some, some room of buffer, if you will. I can add it to the curve.
And you know, so why don't you go to the, the last one?
Sure. So this is, this is basically on size of the, of the property itself rather than, um, the structures or a number of structures and everything like that. So. And we, we pulled the one acre because the one acre is whenever the like RV dwelling units, you can only have one if you're an acre or less. And if you have more than an acre, you can have two. So that's where that, it's kind of a differentiator in another part of the code. So I just kind of pulled it. I highlight these as, uh, give me some input. If you guys want to make a change, I'm more than willing. That's just kind of the, the justification. There are two and a half acres because that's in suburban area zone where you need some kind of shared system or municipal system. To get below two and a half acres. So you can have individual well and septic otherwise.
I still believe that. At least the majority of these are going to be much smaller loss than they. So I mean, to, to. Put a max on encourage and not make a differentiation between, or I would consider recreational lives. That doesn't work to me in any way. I, I still have problems with, uh, I think Dave made a really good point with regard to max occupancy. I still would prefer to go back, maybe eliminate the max occupancy and deal with bedrooms. And parking.
Any thoughts from the other commissioners?
I'm, I'm, I like that idea. Um, it, it begs the question that we've struggled with about how to define a bedroom. I, I liked Alan's suggestion right at the beginning of having people. Swear when they fill out the permit that this is the number of bedrooms that I have. Um, I think people are going to be motivated to call more rooms bedrooms than rather than less because they're trying to get that occupancy up. And, and if we wanted to do something simple, like it has to be a room that has egress. I, I'm, I think that's a good idea too, because it's, it's a safety issue. Um, and I don't think. I don't think we need to be all that particular about how we, how we deal with that, you know, as long as it's got a window or a door.
Interesting thing, question. Last, uh, last month, we spent a weekend in, in, uh, British Columbia. So we're looking at Airbnbs and anything that you can bring up online. And there was such a consistency in the way they were advertised. It just dawned on me, there must be some regulation in British Columbia. That says, you know, what they can, what they can do, how they can do it. They were, it's just, and it's not all one agency that was doing it either. It's, it's false before the, the advertisers. So I wondered.
So you don't, you don't look at land use codes when you go on vacation? That's what I do.
Oh, I'm sure you don't.
I don't. I never got to that point.
I'm surprised you let him back in Canada.
Let me have the phone.
If we're going to do what Dave and Alan are talking about and we're going to have people swear. We're still going to have to have a definition of bedroom on the application.
So that they can say, yes, that is what I have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then how do you go out and verify it?
Well, there's.
Well, like you're, these guys are talking about it being an honor system. But to say, how many bedrooms do you have? You have to have a definition of some sort of definition. Randy, you have to have some sort of definition of bedroom on that application.
Yeah. If you're certifying this warrant state, it's not no longer the honor system. There's.
So I was given, back to my line of thinking that people are going to use rooms as bedrooms that maybe weren't. Originally designed as bedrooms in that house because they're trying to create more sleeping spaces. I, I would, I was actually thinking before I came in here tonight of a, of a simple minded, if it's a room that has a bed in it, it's a bedroom.
Or just beds. In versus that, all that candidate stuff, every single one of them said.
How many beds?
It was how many beds? They, they did define better one bed or two bed, but this, there's also a convertible couch in the room. Every one of them. So something on beds is really what we're talking about here.
Rather than bedrooms.
Yeah. The bedroom could have four cots or bunk beds. If it says four bunk beds, three queen size beds, two queens over here, whatever the number of beds. But, but that's what they, that's what the, uh, additional occupancy limits for. So if you have two per bedroom and you define it as a, a bedroom, like it has a, has egress. And then you have plus four, that takes care of the bunk beds.
Right.
That's kind of what that's for or the pullout. So.
So like two plus four?
Thinking. Yeah, yeah, that's the way to get at it. Kind of parallels. Yeah. It does. But I think you also put in there that they swear at the village, but they also put in there that subject to construction, you know, I mean. Yeah. Reasonable inspection.
But you still have to have the definition for them to know how many bedrooms.
We're talking about the definition.
Yeah.
That has to have an egress.
An egress window or.
Door, window or door.
Yeah. Well, it's going to have an egress if you're getting into it.
Yeah. Egress to the outside. Is that.
Egress to the outside.
If you look on houses for sale, uh, there's one in our neighborhood and it says two bedrooms. For instance, two more, but they're non-conforming.
Exactly.
So why are they not farming? So you look at the pictures and they don't have the right sized window.
Yeah.
For egress. You got a door, obviously, in the room. But they're not, they don't, maybe they don't have a closet. No.
There's not requirement.
No, I don't. When we advertise homes for sale, yeah, we, we have to say non-conformant, doesn't have a closet.
Is it a closet?
The closet, that's what we, our MLS rules are. It has to have a closet.
And is egress a criteria also or?
I don't think, I don't think egress was a criteria. I really don't because there's so many older homes anymore that.
Yeah.
That, that, that egress upstairs may not, may not meet. Yeah, someone's code.
Yeah.
Which like Jake said, we don't say because we have both closets.
Yeah, right. We, we had, so in the, in the. In a BLP application, we require fire sign off and review.
Oh, okay.
So if there's a fire district out there that is really concerned and they're fighting fires and having egress windows. Then they'll, they'll impose that enforcement on, on property owners. Um, there are other ones that don't care at all, right? So there are some that have adopted this state fire code. There's others that haven't. Warner County has not adopted the fire. We leave it up to the, the, those jurisdictions to regulate fire. So I, I just had an email right before this meeting of someone asking about the fire sprinkler standards and such and such road. And I said. Go talk to the fire district over there and let me know where it's at.
Yeah.
I can get you their contact.
Just out of curiosity, Jake, what about height requirements? Max height requirements that match their ladder, they respond to their ladder.
I have no idea. I haven't, I know we don't have any height restrictions at all for buildings. I don't know if there's been, if there are any fire just. I don't even if there's anything inspired code about it, but. Is that what it is? Okay.
You know.
I'm not aware.
My thought in this whole thing, I. Is I think we can go with the, the two, two per bedroom plus four. I would like to see a mechanism of someone can, instead of forcing someone to go through a CUP. That they could be administratively approved for more. If they, if they, if they can adequately show that their, their parking is available. Whether a criteria we want to make.
We can just take out the maximum then, just two per bedroom plus the restriction on parking.
Plus four. Two, two, two per better plus four, no restriction, but the park, they have to meet the parking requirement.
Plus four?
Yeah. It, because like we were discussing, if, if a bedroom has two bunk beds. And two per bedroom, then we have a bunch of kids. I, I've done that myself. And two per bedroom, then we have a bunch of kids, I, I've done that myself.
Okay.
Two bedroom house, you'd have eight people.
Yeah, but a lot of, you know, I understand that, and, and not saying that all the time, those bunk beds, that bedroom with, you know. Two bunk beds, four beds in it. Are always gonna be used by kids, but.
Cause any more a bunk bed is double bed and single bed.
Yeah.
So it's. One, right. It's like two over one.
Yeah, and, and I think we can just kind of keep it, keep it simple that way, like Alan and Mike both commented, um. And do it that way. And I, I would, I would like to see a provision in there for an industry of approval, if it can be actually shown. Just to determine what criteria it is, some people have, we're gonna see. If there's adequate parking. You're on a twenty acre piece. There's no. There's no neighbors within five hundred feet, you know, there's different criteria that I think people really don't. Like the one on Lake Shore Drive.
Yeah.
You know, that. They had plenty of off-street parking on that.
But I mean, at what point does it become? Not a vacation rental use, at what point does it become a hotel or a retreat or? And a resort.
So, right, so I, and I, I have, I share that concern, this is where I'm gonna go back and say maybe a max. Is warranted, but it should be more than the number that Alan was originally suggesting, and exactly to guard against that kind of scenario. Where if you have a large, even if it's a large property, and if you have two or three dwelling units on property for some reason. And they're significant size and you can get up to a large number of people, I, I agree, that goes beyond. A short-term rental residential use, it's something different at that point.
Do we just put a max of thirty with no CUP trigger or something like that?
Thirty. Well, I, I was gonna suggest.
I, I'm throwing something out.
Yeah.
Like if you can meet all parking standards and you have the bedroom count and, you know, you can meet the other criteria. Thirty and then no more ever, like there's no conditional use permit. So then you'd have to go through an Airbnb or go through a hotel, like it's some other kind of CUP, right? Some other type of use, because beyond thirty, you're no longer short-term rental. So I think that safeguards and it falls in line with state code that it's safeguarding neighborhoods. So.
I.
Or, or twenty or twenty-two or whatever a number you guys are comfortable with.
I, I still like the bot, uh, box number three, because it gets us away from bedrooms. We don't know how many bedrooms are in a house. Uh. And we don't know if it has this or that. Bedrooms are really irrelevant. The fact you said there's gonna be only two people per bedroom, what, so you got kids, I mean, come on. There's usually four kids in a bedroom sometimes, and you know, you throw a. Sleeping bag down or a, or a, uh, air mattress or things like that, I mean, just. Does, does, that's not, that's not the point. Excuse me, Mr. Chad, it is in my mind, just to keep it simple. And to have some kind of definition of, of, I agree with the maximum number. Per, per residence, and if you're beyond that number, you get a conditional use for rent. But if you wanna get into more specifics, uh, I'll support that as well, I'm just ready to move on. Two per bedroom is not a restricted, I think, or better, it's, it's a total.
And I think two per bedroom plus four is too extreme, because if you're, if you say two per bedroom. Plus four, that means you're going to have way more than two people in some bedrooms, or you're gonna have four people. Sleeping technically not in bedrooms. That making sense? I grew up in a very small family, but I've never spent a lot of time having four of us in the bedroom. Even as a kid, even when we were having supper parties.
We, my family rented a place a few years ago when I had nineteen of them out here to visit. And the house we rented, one of the bedrooms had two sets of bunk beds in it.
Right.
And it had mom, dad and their two kids, their two kids are two, three years old at the time, sleeping in that bedroom. In addition, they had pullouts, we didn't use them, but they had pullouts in a couple of spaces. If, if you, I don't think we were at their maximum occupancy, but. And it was a good sized house, I mean, and, and it wasn't. Wasn't like we were stuffed in there.
That was here in Bonner.
It was, yeah, it was in Bonner County.
Did they have added the parking on the lot?
Yes.
To park on the property?
Yes.
Were they permitted?
I don't know. I didn't ask them.
What did that say?
Or were they permitted?
Oh, did they have a working septic?
Houses on Bottle Bay, do they have a sewer district there or are they on septic systems? I don't know.
Yeah, there is a sewer system.
On Bottle Bay, there's a sewer system?
Yeah, that's been, that's been through very long, but a few years, not every place is. They tried, they, they tried to force it, everyone busts, and there were some reviews and they got.
So again, it goes to my point that some of these houses, and when I looked here just this evening on Verbo for thirteen people is what I chose. Since we hadn't talked about twelve, and there were some fifty places in Bonner County that would accommodate thirteen or more. And, and a lot of them are up in the, you know, eighteen, twenty, a few are over twenty. But they're big houses, they're seven, six, seven, eight bedrooms, four or five bathrooms, they're not small places. Um, and they're attractive for exactly that kind of situation where, you know, you're gonna have three or four families are gonna get together and go on vacation. Right? So.
So am I hearing consensus to go for the two bedrooms plus? Plus two?
I think I'd be okay with two plus two or two plus four, and I, I, I think est- establishing a maximum. Is probably warranted. I would put it in the twenty or so range. And I'm with Matt, that if somebody wants to do something that's over twenty. I, I think we create something less than full CUP as an alternative for them, but more than a return rental. I think, I think it's, it's. Something with, with more than twenty as a max deserves some additional attention and.
Yeah.
You know, some closer, closer examination of the situation before we okay it, but. I'm not sure we should push them into a full-on CUP, plus, the CUP, it kind of goes against what we're trying to do here with the annual renewals. Right?
So what I could do is do a minor, major, and then the, the major category, we could pull from the, our. Our administrative variance has some code in it that says, may be subject to a hearing. So that way it's not a CUP, we can say, okay, twenty, and if it's a weird scenario and the planning department doesn't wanna make the call, we could. Schedule for a hearing and go a hearing with the zoning commission or the hearing, something like that.
All right, so why we do two plus two? Two plus two, plus the, in the bedrooms and then two, two.
Plus two additional.
And twenty.
And twenty? And then what would be the major of them? So beyond twenty.
Beyond twenty.
Okay.
Because it's, it's two plus two. Maximum twenty, whichever is less.
Right, right, so. And then, and then parking also.
And parking.
Parking could be, could be a limit even less than that.
Right.
Off-street parking.
That would be the three that you got in there.
So do we wanna have any other stricter standards for application contents beyond twenty occupants?
I can't remember in those other, uh. Ones that we read and called, does anybody else remember, if they talked about maximums and how they.
Most of them have a twenty as a max or fifteen, and then a conditional use permit, that's a pretty standard language. There are, most of those are inside cities, so you don't have the same scenario where multiple dwellings beyond a, a home in an ADU. So.
So was that conditionally, is something that had to be renewed every year?
Typically, no, conditional use permits by like state statute fall under special use permits and they, they follow the land like a variance. So if we pull out of that and put the CUP and just say major, minor, and then the, the major would then fall back into the renewal, uh, status. So, and the only time we would add any additional criteria or additional. Um, limitations if they wanna expand the structure or if they're reducing their, their parking to a different area, um, something like that.
First, so if we're going two per bedroom plus two, to go over twenty, somebody would have to have. What, an eight bedroom house? Nine bedroom house?
Say, if they wanted, if they wanted to exceed either the two plus two. Or the twenty, they could, they would have to.
But if we're gonna, it's two plus two. They're not gonna exceed the twenty till seven, nine bedroom.
Well, but they could have a house in an ADU.
Oh.
And what's it? Is it a cumulative total of twenty? That should be the question.
Two, two bedroom max. True, so they could have, you know, a six bedroom house and a two bedroom ADU, for example.
Well, we went back to that chart, what is it taking for?
The chart is, that's an alternative.
That's an alternative, so right here it says that the cumulative, if the cumulative total occupancy is twenty. Allowed, a parcel, a conditional use permit is required, so we change that to a major, you know, a short-term rental permit. Or vacation rental permit is required, and I'll, I'll draft up some other changes to that.
And then you're gonna define bedroom as egress.
If you guys all agree on that by majority, then sure. But I still, I still warn against it, I, I don't think it's a good idea, we haven't had a problem with it. Um, the way it's sitting right now in either the ADU code or the short-term rental code of defining a bedroom, so. I, I wouldn't recommend it, but I, I'll follow your guys' guidance.
Well, I'm in favor of defining a bedroom as egress. Sufficient egress.
I'm gonna agree with the balance.
Did you say sufficient egress?
Egress.
I, I'm good with egress, um.
Well, and exterior egress.
Yeah, exterior egress, yes.
There's a door.
Right. Um.
But like I said, there's so many houses, I'm, I can, I can think of some many. So I go through houses, kind of what I do, um, that were built a long time ago that do not have. You know, up to code now, you have to have the window, uh, you know. Has to be no more than what forty inches above the. Ground floor, and there's so many of these homes have, you know, the, the windows are, are quite a bit higher than that.
There's any windows.
Yeah.
Real common in the sixties. Didn't say for code, said egress.
Oh, just egress, so then exterior egress. Okay.
Right.
So just any kind of, any size window and.
So if it's like a, a balcony on the third floor that I can jump off, that's egress?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm throwing out scenarios.
And that you have to, uh, that your application needs to be under penalty of permission.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I like this, and, and subject to inspection.
And subject to inspection.
So right now, we currently do site visits for the initial inspection, it's actually not in our code, we can essentially cease that practice.
And you go inside and look at bedroom?
No, we typically look at like parking standards and then we post the actual permit, and that's when we issue it. So rather than email them like a building permit, we, we hand it to it on, like, we posted on the, the.
I thought they did go inside online.
They, they might, I, maybe they do go inside and verify bedrooms, but we don't have really a criteria to lean on, so. I'd advise them not to.
They go into, post them.
Cause it's within two feet of the door, we typically don't put the inside, so it doesn't, yeah.
Alright, so, um, then are, do we? So, so an ADU doesn't need to be a bedroom, cause it's already a dwelling unit? Defined, or what, what?
So the, the same limitations would apply, and if we're going off accumulation, like cumulative total of twenty. Um, then it would apply to every single structure, so. This five bedroom and this three bedroom and this two bedroom, whenever we get to twenty max, that's when we cut it off and say, okay, now you need to come in and. Do a different type of ERP, so. That's fine, I, I can draft up some stuff and present it next, by the next meeting.
And a shed is not a dwelling.
That, that's what we're, that's what we're adding in that provision for, um, B, is it says, uh, no temporary structural or accessory building. Um, shall be used as a vacation rental, and then no RV dwellings shall be used as vacation rentals. Alright.
Good to me, then, then let this go to parking. Free. We need, is this where we, on the number five, should we, um. Put in there? At the parking plan. Used to have some kind of. Property line dimensions or?
We, we put that in the application contents.
Any, any changes to number five that we wanna make?
Uh, is, is the average person? Who comes in for a permit gonna understand what accessory uses means and, and the implications? For people who come with boats or whatever. Should we, in other words. Maybe if, for example, is.
That's a good.
Put it out there just to make sure that people understand it, or, I mean, as long as that's on the application, clearly understood on the application.
Oh, we, yeah, instead of putting it.
This, they're gonna read the application.
Yeah, we could put accessory uses are as such, you know, boats, boat trailers, other, you know. Yeah. Okay.
Alright, so.
I, I just like.
Go ahead.
One off-street parking space shall be provided for each. We're going with three or four?
Three.
It says both, three.
No, the four is crossed out.
Four is crossed out.
Okay, it's hard for me to see that, okay, three, three persons. In, uh, in the rental that's next door to me, I would say usually, usually they arrive two per. They don't very often pack the car with people, it's more a couple of people per car. So I don't know, I just, um.
The, 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 um. Sentence there though also imposes station. Right? There's no, no more vehicles than can be accommodated in the designated off-street parking spaces, so it, it doesn't give them. An out.
Right.
If they come two per car or even one per car, they still have to stay within off-street parking limitations of the property. I come back to the enforcement question like we always do, but.
Right.
I think, yeah, I think it's covered.
And once again, a lot of the.
I, I, I got booted and it's restarting.
Oh.
And once again. That dynamic right there is communication between the homeowner and the tenants.
Yes.
So we, we're requiring the site plan with the parking plan to be posted. Within two feet, I think we put that under, there's another spot.
But by the time they get there, Jake, it's too late. That, that has to be communicated between the, the landlord.
So, I mean, we can draft up a regulation that, that says, a property owner shall supply the parking plan too, but how would I ever enforce that?
Exactly.
CC the planning department on all your, no, I don't.
Exactly, that's why I think it's more important to express. To the owner when they apply for the permit. They can only have cars on that property, it doesn't matter how many cars really, it's that they all have to fit within the property.
So the consequences, in my mind, this is the way I think about it, consequences if they, if the owner doesn't manage this situation well. Is that people will call Deckard and complain, there's people parked on my property again. And, and then at the end of the year, when they come to do a renewal, we'll see that, and that'll be one of the criteria for whether they get a renewal.
That would be so handy.
That was the most going on with that one down in Clear Creek, they were parked all over the neighborhood.
Yep.
Not on site, cause there's no room on site.
Right.
Alright, so. We're good with five? Well. Six is a free. So, seven. It's okay. There you go.
Is there an O D O L opportunity here?
Seven D, in sync with everything we've now said about occupancy.
So, one thing we'll wanna add is. In seven is whoever the complaint line is for Decker, that should be posted there too, right?
Yeah.
Or not.
Is it come back up on the screen?
I'm, I'm working on it.
Oh, okay.
The contact information for the planning department and the sheriff's office, so. I think that covers it, um, and we can tell them, cause what I don't wanna do is. Give them a phone, like a specific, and then we change, or let's say they don't renew a contract, so I think it, it falls under that planning department.
What does Decker do to advertise? Their complaint law, I mean, it's gotta be someone.
So it's on us to advertise it, so we would be posting like on both Dex's website and ours, we'll have a link that says short-term rental. And then we'll have, you know, for short-term rental complaints, please call this. Right?
And would that perhaps go out, like when the, when I was originally notified, when I had. Short-term rental people, would that number go out in that notification?
We can, yeah, we can.
I don't know, is that appropriate?
Right now, we send the project rep, and I'm guessing we get the majority of the calls, the project reps don't, but I.
Right.
So I, I don't know what the stigma is about not contacting the property owner, and rather than go through the government to have the government contact them. That's, that's the way it happens, maybe they do contact the, the project rep and we don't get as many phone calls as we would. I don't know, I don't know if it's working or not, cause we don't have.
It's, um, it's. From my personal experience, it creates, um, neighborhood problems. When you're calling your neighbor.
You want a moderator? You want a moderator? No, it's it's working. Give it a sec. I I don't know why I got booted off the Wi-Fi. That's fine, I've. Yeah, like I said, the probably fifty percent of the complaints through that hotline are not. Planning related or anything else. It's not vacation rental related. It's, you know, my neighbor's. Doing something else, you know, their dog's barking really loud. I don't like it, but it's not a short term rental. So that that's from Court Lane and they've had it for a couple of years and that's that's the majority of those complaints, but. Yeah, we we can advertise it. We can put it on our website. We can add it to the flyer we send out. That's fine.
I have a question for you or maybe we're hammer. What number are we on? Eight? Okay, I'll wait to get there then.
Okay, well, we're on seven, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're done with seven.
Okay, the boating and recreational rules was, I think it was a commissioner that was really concerned about boating and. Whatnot, that's how that got in there. So I think we even give like a boater safety manual or some some kind of flyer.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, alright.
Any any problem with eight, nine or ten?
We can have like the recreation component of the company.
My only question I have on ten, this again. All vacation rental shall conform to the zoning in which they are located, including and up to flood plain permitting, surely regulations and other applicable building location permits. Does that mean you're gonna check to find out where the the structure had a building location permit? Well, what happens on a lot of these structures that were built in the seventies, sixties?
So if it predates the code, the code only requires if it's built after oh eight, right?
Oh, right.
So November eighteenth. On November eighteenth of oh eight. I don't know why.
Okay, I like.
Anyways, um so that's that's been our and that's a good way. Anytime someone applies for B L P, we review the whole property. Anytime someone applies for a vacation rental, we reply, we we read the whole property.
Okay.
To see if there's any other nonconforming or illegal structures, right?
Ah ha, you guys are sneaky little buggers, aren't you?
Back to eight.
Little bit.
Um, should we also require in advertising that they uh advertise for the permitted occupancy? You talk about.
Number sign itself.
Well.
This is like on a on an outdoor sign.
So that's not clear to me. It's advertising.
Hmm.
Advertising to me includes what they say on Verbo.
Well.
Okay.
That's the way I would interpret it.
On site.
On site.
On site.
Well, that's the first.
The second sentence is all advertising. Not onsite.
Right.
That's that's what.
That's. Yeah, that should it should have maximum.
Yeah.
So we take out so permit number, maximum occupancy and maximum number of vehicles.
Yeah.
Is my computer not working because I have. It's not nothing's coming up.
Okay, I've added that on my end over here. Oh, six forty-five. I bet the the cell service is everyone's at home. I don't know. I don't know what's going on. So now we're on T.
So nine to me is. Kind of some subjective requirement, but but those are getting to this kind of this Matt pointed out a while ago. You get into the to the major. Major category, those are the kind of things that. Wh- which the subjective criteria in number nine.